So, everybody is here. So I'm going to go ahead and call this meeting to order. And we are assembled here tonight. It is Tuesday, February 9th, 2020. It is 7:00 PM and we are assembled here for the City of Oxford Board of Commissioners Regular Monthly Meeting. And we are meeting via Zoom, which means that I need to do an oral roll call. I will start with Mayor Pro Tem.
Present.
Okay, and then going to my right, Commissioner Curran.
Present.
Commissioner Bullock.
Present.
Commissioner Fields.
Present.
Commissioner Bridges.
Present.
Commissioner Tovey.
Present.
And Commissioner Gilreath.
Present.
Okay, excellent. And tonight I will go ahead and read the mission. "Of the City of Oxford is to serve and improve our community by providing high-quality, affordable services, sound planning for growth and development, and offering the highest possible quality of life while maintaining the public's trust through open communication and ethical standards at all times." I now will invite Reverend Jenny Wilson of Oxford United Methodist Church for all those who are so inclined to open this meeting in prayer. Thank you, Reverend Jenny.
Let us pray. Oh Lord, our Lord, how majestic is your name in all the earth. And this day that you have given us is indeed a majestic one. And as we move into the evening, we give you thanks for this day that you've given us, for all the work you've had before us, for the encounters that we have had with people we know. We ask you continue to help us to be people who listen well to others. That all who are assembled here this night gather together all of their hopes and dreams for this community in which we live together, that we may work for justice, we may treat one another with mercy and compassion, and we may take seriously all that you, oh God, give us to do for the betterment of all. Be with each person here, empower and strengthen them in all of the ways they are having to work differently now. But may we listen well to your very heart, oh God, and work in all ways to love you more and love our neighbors well. We pray this in your gracious and strong and holy name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you so very much Reverend Wilson. That was just beautiful. And now Commissioner Danny Curran will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. He said it.
Thank you so much Commissioner Curran. At this time, we will consider adjustments to an approval of the agenda. On Monday, February 1st, a motion by Commissioner John Tovey and a consensus of the board to add item 4D, "Consider adopting the City of Oxford Comprehensive Parks and Recreation Master Plan" is to be added to tonight's agenda. And I apologize for not knowing this for certain. Did we not get an additional email from you, Ms. Bowen, about another item?
We do, and City Manager Thornton is to present that.
Okay, can Mr. Thornton, can you tell us a little bit more? And I apologize for not having that with me.
I'll be glad to. Hopefully everyone got the add-on, which would be item 4E on tonight's agenda if the board were to allow its inclusion. The subject or the item is to consider contracting with Stephen Austin for administrating the CDBG coronavirus grant in the amount of $900,000. The city basically had advertised in the paper back in December and received essentially one proposal to administrate the funds, the grant. So we again advertised in January and we received a second proposal. Mr. Austin's was significantly less expensive, to the tune of $53,000, less expensive for administrative services. And we would like to essentially place this on the agenda for the board's approval to contract with Stephen Austin for administrating the CDBG coronavirus grant. And the reason we wanted to get that on the agenda tonight is it would essentially save us 30 more days and get the funds moving more quickly into our community. So that's the reason for the request to get it on the agenda tonight. We would like to expedite the funds getting into the community as quickly as we can possibly do so, and this would save us 30 days.
Okay, excellent, thank you. Are there any other comments? So we have item 4D, which is to adopt the Comprehensive Parks and Recreation Master Plan. And 4E, as the city manager just stated, are there any other adjustments?
I just have a question, please.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Manager, it was to my understanding that you wanted to wait and not add the comprehensive recreation plan. Did I misunderstand that? Or is that what you said?
We are not, we are not adding the HIX complex component of it at this point in time. We do wish to have the board approve the overall master plan tonight and move it forward. That was the conversation held Monday, last Monday, and the board wanted to take that action.
Okay, so.
So only the body of the master plan, the tenure plan, which discusses the functioning of the Parks and Recreation Department and so on, but not the separate schematic for the HIX field master plan?
I moved, we have the agenda scheduled with the two additions.
Right, okay, we have a motion. Thank you Commissioner Bullock. By Commissioner Bullock, any further discussion?
Yeah, I am curious. Relative to the recreation plan, does that include discussion about the monies that were supposed to be set aside for a pool?
No, sir. That would, it would just be that master plan, which actually Ms. Bowen included in our agenda, just the work that Tina Cheek and her staff did with a consultant to get the information from the community. So, so your item would be, that could be brought up separately. This is just very simply accepting, adopting the Parks and Recreation Ten Year Master Plan as it is attached in your agenda.
Well, at the agenda meeting, I think I made a comment that I know that Commissioner Tovey was certainly going to add addressing the recreation comprehensive plan. And I think I added to that. I hope that there will also be discussion relative to the funds that were not being set aside, but basically just put back into, you know, our reserve funds.
Mr. Thornton, am I, do I remember correctly that when Commissioner Bridges brought this up, we had some discussion about bringing it up in the budget session so that we could discuss precisely that and the board could make a recommendation for how much to set aside? And you had even said that it would be possible to set aside a certain amount to retroactively cover what the board thought was being put aside?
Yes, I think that's the cleanest way to do it, is to actually create that capital project in your upcoming budget. That way you can not only include that line item in your budget and place whatever amount of funds that you wish to place in there that could account since whenever 2012. This is, this was being discussed and supposedly set aside, but it would also assist in placing it into your capital improvement plan for upcoming future projects. And that way you could make the two kind of coincide and run parallel.
Okay, and Commissioner Tovey has a question, and then we'll go back to you, Commissioner Bridges, to make sure your question's being answered. Yes, yes, sir, Commissioner Tovey.
I believe that's what was mentioned at the agenda meeting, that because it wasn't currently in the budget, it needs to be put in the budget under a line item, and then it can be retroactively, the money could be retroactively put in there. I was hoping that would answer Commissioner Bridges' question. But it needs to be a line item.
It was actually at the Parks and Rec Committee meeting when we said all of that.
Thank you.
That was right prior to the, to the agenda meeting on February 1st.
Oh, bravo, Commissioner Gilreath. Thank you very much, and I apologize for my faulty remembering of when that took place. But Commissioner Bridges, would that address your concern?
Yeah.
Okay, that's great. I just want to make sure we're all straight. Any further discussion on adding these two agenda items? Okay, then hearing no further discussion, I will do the tally. Mayor Pro Tem, what say you? Okay, Commissioner Curran.
Hello, there.
Commissioner Bullock.
Yes.
Commissioner Fields. Commissioner Bridges.
Yes.
Commissioner Tovey.
Yes.
Commissioner Gilreath.
Yes.
Okay, the budget stands adopted with these two changes, and thanks to each of you for your comments. "In order to provide for the highest possible standards of behavior and transparency, our board approved a code of ethics to establish guidelines for ethical standards for ourselves and to provide guidance in determining appropriate conduct among those that we should avoid in propriety in the exercise of our official duties and should conduct the affairs of the board in an open and public manner. I now inquire whether any board member knows of any conflict of interest or appearance of such with respect to any matters before the board tonight. And if you do know of any conflict of interest or appearance of such, please state so at this time." Any conflicts? Let the record note, Madam Clerk, no conflicts. And at this time, we move forward to public comment. We have two people signed up. I will start with Derek Brown, who is our Historic Preservation Commission Chair. I thank you for volunteering your time for that, Mr. Brown. And for the record, please state your name and address and purpose.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for allowing me to join you all tonight. My name is Derek Brown. My address is 213 High Street. And my purpose is to talk about the future of the Oxford National Armory. So I can go ahead and start, Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so I've, it should only probably take a few minutes. So again, I would like to thank the Board of Commissioners for allowing me a few minutes to make a statement regarding the future of the Oxford National Armory. My statement will be made in my capacity as Chairman of the Oxford Historic Preservation Commission, as well as a resident and proud owner of a historic home in the Main Street Historic District. First, in my capacity as Chair of the Oxford Historic Preservation Commission, I was somewhat confused when I read the front page of the Oxford Public Ledger article dated Thursday, February 4th, 2021. The confusion was predicated on a letter sent by my predecessor, Tony Armento, on January 16th, 2020, to the city planner Cheryl Hart, which was reviewed by the Board of Commissioners during your February 11th, 2020 regular meeting. Please note that I was in attendance at the February meeting as the newly appointed Chair of the HPC to answer any questions if necessary. This letter sought continued support from the city for completion of the Historic Preservation Commission's project to update Oxford's listings in the National Register for Historic Places. Additionally, it sought continued support on the listings of the Oxford National Guard Armory and the Williamsboro Military Streets Historic District. The NNCRC, the North Carolina National Register Advisory Committee, had approved these two architectural surveys. As you may recall, these two surveys would have been included in the initial OHD expansion, but could not be included due to incompatible structures or historic structures with incomplete modifications lying between them and the OHD expansion. As part of the board's continued commitment to a historic, friendly, and walkable Oxford, the board voted to continue support of the above-mentioned. We received a letter to that effect, and the HPC greatly appreciated this vote and proceeded accordingly. With the above-mentioned information and vote, we received the money, again without utmost appreciation to the board, and we proceeded with the following. "We applied for the grant and engaged the state office to evaluate our requests and to ensure that due diligence was performed. The city submitted an RFP publicly in the newspaper. Offering of a bid was done publicly in the newspaper. Consultants spent their time preparing RFPs, and the city planner presented the proposals to the Historic Preservation Commission to review and provide a recommendation based on the applicants. I respectfully ask the following questions with the full understanding and knowledge that the board has final say regarding how best to proceed. Why the change and concern at this point? Are there particular questions regarding procedural impositions based on listing the armory in the National Register? One of my concerns is that I don't want there to be a misperception that a quasi judicial arm of the city, the Oxford Historic Preservation Commission, is not aligned with the board in its commitment to the historic preservation of this great city and community. The HPC's goals and objectives defined by the Charter and the desired guidelines should not run counter to the city's per se, ex post facto of an already approved request. I fear based on the issue of the National Armory, we may not be aligned. The cost and benefit of listing in the National Register of Historic Places is the eligibility of that structure to benefit from historic preservation income tax credits. As stated in the January 16th, 2020 letter, quote, "For property that is income-producing, qualified rehabilitation expenses receive 20% federal income tax credit and 20% North Carolina income tax credit, rather than the base 15%, as Granville County is designated as Tier 2 by the North Carolina Department of Commerce." Further, again quoting from the January 16th, 2020 letter, quote, "Because it is virtually a certainty that the Oxford National Guard Armory building will eventually be placed into services and income-producing property, listing of the building in the National Register of Historic Places will permit the property owner 40% combined federal and North Carolina income tax credits for qualified rehabilitation expenses. If the question's concerns for the board are based on understanding further what the modifier qualified of that rehabilitation means, I'm making a big assumption and thinking that concerns are based on potential restrictions to the proposed workforce training center. And if there are limitations there, was Michelle McKay Patterson contacted to shed additional light in this area if there were questions not answered in the aforementioned January letter? In my opinion, there does not appear to be significant limitations. Instead, it opens up eligibility for federal and state tax credits in the event the armory is sold. It is true that any proposed grant project application would have to meet the Secretary of Interior's standards, and as the National Park Service would not award a grant for interior or exterior work that would compromise the historic integrity of the building. Maintaining defining architectural features would not be a limitation if the overall goal is to preserve the historic nature of the building. Last but not least, my statement as a resident of the Historic District. I moved to Oxford, North Carolina in January of 2017 from Northern Virginia to reside in and engage in a community which focuses and finds a prudent balance between the historic preservation of its buildings while modernizing a city to meet essential needs of a community in the 21st century. The purchase of my home occurred not only because it spoke to me in its architectural beauty and grandeur, but also because there are entities, the City of Oxford, the Oxford Historic Preservation Commission, and the State Historic Preservation Office of North Carolina, that appear to work together in what I believe to be a symbiotic relation to make informed decisions regarding how best to preserve this home and others, as well as public buildings in this great city. I do hope there can be a statement from the board regarding if your concerns have been met, and I do hope the board will receive comprehensive answers to their concerns before proceeding with a vote. Although my perception and scope are limited to my two roles as Chairman of the HPC and an owner of a historic district property, I fully understand there are other political and economic and fiscal variables at play. For that reason, I do with utmost honor and respect appreciate your time and consideration of this matter at hand. Thank you."
Thank you very much, Mr. Brown. We appreciate your coming forward to speak tonight since this item is on the agenda tonight. And are there any board members that have any questions for Mr. Brown at this time? Okay, then we will go forward to our next person that has signed up. But Mr. Brown, I don't know if you want to stay on in order, in case anything comes up when we get to that item.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Lori Dutra, who is also signed up. And let me, there you are on my screen, Mrs. Dutra. If you can state your name and address and purpose for the record, and then take it away. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I'd like to thank the board again for having public comment time. I think it's very helpful to you all to have this from the public. For the record, I'm Lori Dutra. I am a city resident at 101 Tranquil Drive and the owner of a downtown business at 205 Williamsboro Street. I've also been a proud part of downtown Oxford from my office at 118 Main Street for the past 30 years. For the past six years, I have been an active part of the city's downtown master plan effort. And I appear before you tonight as a continuing, willing volunteer to make things happen downtown. The reason I'm speaking tonight is I want to spotlight the recent efforts of your staff and the Downtown Economic Development Corporation to bring life to our downtown plan and speak briefly to update you, to congratulate you, and to implore you to continue this effort and to take some bold steps as we move forward. One of the most daunting but popular parts of our downtown master plan is addressing our power lines downtown and our walkability. Last week, the DOE DC hosted a visit from the Duke Energy Engineers. Two engineers came who have, quote, "boots-on-the-ground experience" in doing downtown planning. I was surprised at that meeting, which I attended, and some of you did too, to learn that we have an opportunity at the present time to eliminate some of those pesky overhead lines that crisscross downtown by putting them underground, and that Duke Energy will provide the conduit and the materials to do so if we can work in getting that done. While we have the streets torn up and being resurfaced by our DOT, I think our only regret would be to look back in a year or two and say, wow, we really should have taken advantage of that opportunity. The engineers expressed the same sentiment as they spoke to us. You've already authorized your consulting engineer to review and add the planned striping and painting for some of the pedestrian improvements that will be coming to Main Street and Williamsboro Street. That is a great step, and I believe those plans are being generated. And hopefully they'll be discussed by your board in the near future. As you know, every small step that we take as a community to shore up our commitment to our vision and to this plan will add and help us gain points when it really matters and we are competing for grant funds to spend the big bucks. I'm only one of a small army of volunteers of downtown folks, all of us willing to work for this. I ask that you authorize our manager and your staff to actively and immediately consult with Duke Energy regarding this possibility and facilitate the communication necessary with DOT, possibly CenturyLink, before it's too late to even look at this opportunity. We'll never know what we could have done if we don't ask and chase the dream. Commissioners, I think opportunity is knocking and pounding on our doors. Please don't just look through the peephole and walk away. Throw open the door and invite this progress to dinner. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Dutra. We appreciate that. And I, for one, knowing that you're a part-owner of a restaurant, appreciate the invite them for dinner finale. Thank you very much. And with that, we will, yes, sir.
Based on Ms. Dutra's presentation, of course, I mean, I was not at that meeting. But I was curious, can we have a combination of some lines underground and some lines above ground? I mean, is it all or nothing, or can we do some portions?
Ms. Dutra, you can answer. I can answer.
I'm happy just to say what I heard. And I know your manager and your Economic Development Director have far more handle, and your engineer have more handle on this than I do. My understanding is, we're going to probably have to live with some of the major transmission lines overhead. But some of the smaller lines that are just providing power to the buildings can be put underground in order that we get to a point where our next step might be to move poles behind buildings. But every step is important. And of course, putting anything underground when you've got roads torn up makes sense if it possibly can be done. But it is going to be a shared experience for what can and what cannot go underground. Yes.
So, Mr. Thornton and Ms. Yount, do you have anything you'd like to add to that?
Yeah, I'll add something to that. We are having those conversations currently with our engineers about essentially being prepared enough to submit something to the DOT for their approval, because that was also part of what was revealed in the conversation. We all understand and realize that, you know, Main Street and the majority of the streets downtown are controlled by the Department of Transportation, so you can't go down there and spit on them without getting the DOT's approval. So. So in order to do that, we would have to get their approval, which means you've got to do design plans and submit them for review. Now, the, as Ms. Dutra mentioned, we are going to have to live with there being some power poles and lines in downtown Oxford in some way, shape or form. We're talking about potentially getting some conduit in the street along Main Street to prepare for putting some of those service lines underground, because just putting the lines underground for services is not in and of itself the total equation to the problem. Each business served would have to do some reconfiguration of the wiring and the service to their individual business. So if dollar signs are flashing in your eyes, you are correct that it would, you know, it's going to take some additional doing with each individual business being number one, willing to do so. But, you know, she does make the point that this is our opportunity if we can move forward quickly enough and get something in place that the DOT would accept. Essentially, what you're going to wind up having is a contractor coming in advance of the resurfacing and striping by the DOT taking place and digging in certain areas, placing hand boxes as well as putting in conduit to be prepared to pull some of these lines once we get to that point of eliminating some of those service lines that crisscross the street. So, you know, there's a lot to it. Just like anything else, there's a lot to it. If you really start thinking about those lines downtown, not all of them belong to Duke Energy. I mean, there's cable and fiber and all kind of stuff running down through there that they don't even own, that they would have to in turn seek permission from those providers, subproviders on their poles in order to do this. So, you know, it still has a ways to go, and I don't want to get anybody's hopes up. But in order to get some of those service lines potentially eliminated, placing the conduit in preparation for that would be a good step forward. We just have to be able to jump through all the hoops necessary that we would have to jump through. And we started having those conversations immediately after last Wednesday, I believe it was, Wednesday's meeting in the morning with the folks from Duke Energy. So we're trying to do our part to the best of our ability, because, you know, I think we all agree that it would make our downtown certainly look much more presentable aesthetically to have less wires. I don't think anybody disagrees with that point.
Does that answer your question, Commissioner Bridges?
Uh, yeah.
Okay, great.
Kinda, you know, I mean, I, you know, I certainly want to make downtown look better. I just, you know, wanted to make sure, you know, if we could do some parts of it at one point and then do some more later, that kind of thing.
That's exactly, that's exactly what is the intent, is you could already clean it up significantly if you could remove some of the lines that are crossing the street. That changes your view of the streetscape. And then you can work to eliminate more along one side or the other. I would add one thing, Mr. Thornton and Ms. Yount, and everybody. When I was downtown yesterday, actually looking on the side of the street that Mrs. Dutra's office is and the hub is, if you stand at the corner of the hub and you look down, I don't see any electric lines going into the front of the building. It looks like all of those businesses have already moved their service to the back, to this uneducated eye. I'm just gonna say that. When I was looking down, it was like I don't see anything going into the front. So maybe, maybe there's more hope than we thought.
Anything that removes the lines from downtown, got my hundred percent approval.
There you go. Okay, excellent. So thank you, Mrs. Dutra, for your comments. And with that, I think we will move forward to city business, which is Agenda Item Four. And Item A is to consider directing the city clerk to investigate the sufficiency of the petition and certify the sufficiency to annex four point two five acres located on Lewis Street adjacent to the out parcel at Walmart Shopping Center. Preston B. Royster is requesting on behalf of Eddie Cottle to annex four point two five acres located on Lewis Street adjacent to art out parcel at Walmart Shopping Center for commercial development. The applicant is taking the necessary steps to request that the property be rezoned to commercial. Staff recommends authorizing city clerk to investigate the sufficiency of the petition and certifying its sufficiency. What is the pleasure of the board? That's great. Commissioner Curran made the motion. I think Commissioner Toby was trying, but you were on mute, sir. So Commissioner Curran made the motion. Is there any discussion? Okay, if there is no discussion, then I will do the roll call, starting with Mayor Pro Tem. What say you? Commissioner Curran going to my right. Commissioner Curran.
I'll look, yes.
Commissioner Bullock.
Yes.
Commissioner Bridges.
Yes.
Commissioner Toby.
Yes.
Commissioner Gilreath.
Yes.
Commissioner Fields.
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. Item B, this is the item to which Mr. Brown was speaking. Consider contracting with ACOM to complete a National Register of Historic Places nomination for the National Guard Armory. Requests for proposals were sent out on the preservation list serve in November. The following consultants submitted proposals for the sixty five hundred dollar Armory Project, ACOM, Carolina Historical Consulting, MDM Historical Consultants, Hanbury Preservation Consulting. The city is required to provide a forty percent match, which is included in the current budget. ACOM was chosen by the HPC because of their experience in the area of National Guard Armories. Project Manager Marvin Brown has thirty eight years of experience in historical and architectural studies, environmental compliance procedures and project management, most of which have taken place in North Carolina. As it happens, he also wrote the book Heritage and Homesteads on Granville County. Recommended action, and you have all that support information in Attachment Four B. I apologize for not mentioning that earlier. That staff in the HPC recommend contracting with ACOM. But as you know, there was some discussion last week and some additional discussion. So I hand it over to the will of the board.
There is a question that I would like to ask. And that was when a gentleman was putting his, reading his notations, he said that the historical society wouldn't, would not have significant limitations. What does significant mean? Or is there any limitations? I mean, I'm thinking that if we go ahead with the proposal with Vance Granville Community College, will they have limitations on what they can do inside the building as to refurbishment, et cetera?
I don't know if, Mr. Brown, you want to comment to that, or Ms. Hart, do you want to comment to that?
I'll defer to Cheryl on that, because I, part of my discussion too was around whether there was any additional discussion with Michelle around those questions as well. I don't know if that was asked of her or not, but that was part of what I was wondering about.
Michelle is the woman at the state?
Yes.
McKayton, okay, yes. Ms. Hart.
Yeah, so I did have further email correspondences with Ms. Patterson McKay. And I think there was a gray area in that. And in the email that I shared with the manager, I don't think Mr. Thornton is comfortable in the answer that we received. I don't think it pretty much answered his questions. And, you know, Mr. Thornton had a valid point. I think we need to be clear on it in terms of before we move further.
Commissioner Toby, you wanted to say something more?
Yes, I've got that email here. And the second paragraph, it says, if state or federal funds are used for rehabilitation, those must follow the Secretary of Interior Standards. So, so if there's any federal funds going to the building to refurbish it, then we must follow the Secretary of the Interior Standards. So that to me, and we need clarification, as Ms. Hart said, that to me means that you could be restricted as to what you can do to that building. And I want to see Vance Granville College, Community College come to the Armory. So that's a, that's a problem for me at the moment.
Yes, sir.
As I look at this, there's a couple of points that come to my mind. One, seems like if we're voting on this to proceed, we've already committed to put the Armory on, you know, the historic register. But to me, it still comes across as we haven't really defined a definitive use that we're committed to for that building. And I don't want us to do anything that will restrict whatever decisions we come to in the future. You know, it may be an advantage for someone to be able to pursue those tax, you know, incentives, but it may not be. But it's just still too much open right now for me to say that I'm comfortable with putting it on the register. And possibly, if we did pursue that registry, our tax incentives, what restrictions that would have. I just would rather see us wait for the moment since we don't have to do it right now.
Commissioner Curran.
I agree with Commissioner Bullock. I'd see no need to do this till we decide what we want to do with them. And I said that last week. I think we need to decide what we want to do with it. One question I'll have, if it were to be listed, could the building, could somebody buy it and tear it down?
There, I think, yes. I think it's a different, and maybe I need to, I know Commissioner Gilreath had a question, but let's, Commissioner Gilreath, if you can hold on a minute, let's pull in Cheryl Hart. There is a difference between the Historic Preservation Commission of Oxford and what they allow. And essentially, if it was listed and somebody, we sold it and somebody wanted to tear it down, then you just, I mean, that happened with the property that we discussed on New College that, that they tore the building down and then the property was still listed as historic, but there wasn't anything on it. But Ms. Hart, do you want to comment to Mr. Commissioner Curran's question?
The way that I read the information, if the property was listed on the National Register, the owner could ask for it to be delisted. So taken out of the, out of the National Register, kind of similar to what we did with the local district here with the New College Street property.
Okay, that's fine, but I still agree with Commissioner Bullock to wait.
I'm just curious as to how this came up and what would be the benefits?
That was, that was exactly my question too. How are we evaluating the Armory property in relationship to workforce development and historic preservation while we having both of these conversations at the same time?
The conversation, as Mr. Brown pointed out, this conversation about the Armory came up a year ago in February at the end of a kind of a year-long process that the Historic Preservation Commission had gotten grant money and engaged somebody to reevaluate historic properties in Oxford and submit them for listing. And, and Mr. Brown, if I'm misspeaking, please jump in and correct me. But the last time there was an evaluation done was in the mid eighties by Marvin Brown, actually, as part of a, I think, a thesis, a PhD thesis that he was doing. And he wrote a book, and then they did the application. But at that time, there were a number of properties in the City of Oxford that were not old enough to be considered list, to be listed, including the Orpheum. And the Armory was one of those, that they were, they were not, they did not meet the age threshold. So this was part of a project that was taking place by the Historic Preservation Commission of Oxford, already started two plus years ago. And they working to increase the numbers of homes that would be eligible for listing. And then, as, as Mr. Brown explained, that, that they needed two separate applications for properties that were not connected to existing historic districts. Did I capture that correctly, Mr. Brown?
You did, thank you. And, and I think that also, if I may add as well, to, to tie into what Commissioners Curran and Bullock are saying, you know, as I stated before, my, my goal is just to communicate and convey the, what had occurred before contextually. And then to also, for you all to have all the information in toto to make the determination that's best for the city. One thing that I would say is that if there is not a need to expedite this now, is to engage more, you know, respectfully with Michelle McKay Patterson to ensure that those vague areas are addressed and answered so that you all can have a full understanding of what the limitations or restrictions may be before proceeding with the vote.
Excellent. Thank you, sir. So we have, Commissioner Fields, were you, were you making a motion that you wanted to speak? No, you're okay? Okay, um, hang on just a minute. It looks like my computer needs to be plugged in. Okay. Is there any further discussion? I mean, there's certainly, we've heard already from Commissioner Toby, Commissioner Curran, Commissioner Bullock about not wanting to proceed. Is there, and we've had the suggestion, and certainly we know that the manager is very concerned and understandably so, that we don't want to jeopardize any opportunities that we might have. And by the same token, would it be reasonable to say that perhaps we do not vote tonight? But if we are able to have more substantive, because I think the very clear question is if there is a desire by any entity to do interior work and, and acquire grant funds to do it, would that limit their options as to what they could do or not? Am I, am I stating that correctly, Mr. Thornton?
I believe that that is the crux of the matter. You know, from everything, everything that I have read still leaves me in that same position of recommending that you do not take that action. Rehabilitation, be it interior or exterior, if it's receiving grant funds, you're going to have to go through all of these hoops. And I just don't see the benefit. A lot of what you heard, with all due respect to Mr. Brown, from what I understood and heard, was predicated upon the ability of the buyer to claim tax credits. Because that was repeated more than once, predicated upon the sale of the facility, the sale of the building and the tax credits. Now, if we do not sell it, if we are the retaining owner entity and essentially were to lease it to a fellow nonprofit such as Vance Granville Community such as Vance Granville Community College, it would just, it would handicap any and all of that. Because most certainly, they are going to be seeking grant funds in order to establish a workforce development center. And it's just, it's overly complicated. I don't see the benefit in it at this time. My position remains the same.
Okay.
Do we need a motion to remove it from the agenda? Or what do we need so we can go to four, five, whatever the next number is?
So, do, do we table it in the sense that if there is any information that Ms. Hart finds out that, that is, shows that these concerns are not, that there is actually grant money? We can always bring it back, but in the meantime, we don't pursue it?
Please define in the meantime, are we talking about till next month's meeting or what?
Well, I think, you know, that as I understand from Ms. Hart, there's a time limitation on the grant funds that were received, correct? And by when they need to be used? Am I, am I understanding that correctly, Ms. Hart?
There is a timeline, but I can't say for sure if we wait and put it off until next month. If additional information is received, that it will kill the deal.
So you're, what, what you're saying is even if we find out that, that the concern about not being able to use grants to make, to renovate the property, you're, what you're saying is if we wait another month to approve this, it would probably kill the deal anyway?
No, that's not what I'm saying, no, ma'am.
Okay.
It would just take a little longer and we possibly could ask for an extension if that was the case.
Okay. So do we, yes, sir, Commissioner Tovey?
Can I, can I make a motion that we table item 4B until we have further investigation, in-depth investigation into this matter?
Oh, boy.
You certainly may. We have a motion. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, then, all in favor of the motion? Signal so by saying aye when I call your name. Commissioner Bullock to my right.
No.
No, John is saying table it.
I heard that.
Okay, so you're saying you don't agree to table it?
Right.
Okay.
And to explain that, it seems like the forums and all, it seems like we're voting sort of after the fact. So, you know, I get back to the point of, we haven't really defined how we're going to use it. So I don't know that table it's going to do any good right now.
Okay. All right, so we have no, Commissioner Bridges?
Yes.
Commissioner Tovey?
Yes.
Commissioner Gilreath?
Yes.
Commissioner Fields?
Yes.
Commissioner Curran?
Yes.
Bear with me, Mayor Protem?
Yes.
Okay, there we go. Yes, I do have everybody. I'm sorry, this would people spread out, it gets difficult for me. Okay, though, that motion carries six to one. And thank you for the discussion and Mr. Thornton for bringing up your concerns so we can be sure that we're evaluating this appropriately. Mr. Brown for bringing your comments and Ms. Hart also for yours. Thank you so much. So we move forward to item C, to consider calling for a public hearing for the March ninth, 2021 Regular Board Meeting to receive citizen input for a zoning request considering, consisting of 4.25 acres adjacent to the Walmart shopping area. The Comprehensive Land Use Map shows the area as regional commercial. The request involves rezoning the property from residential agricultural to B2 highway business. Permitted uses in the B2 zoning district include restaurants, gas stations, banks, auto sales, medical offices, hotels, et cetera. And you have support information in attachment 4C, which has the letter of request from the project engineer, Preston Royster, and a map. And what the recommendation is that staff in the planning board recommend calling for a public hearing. What is the pleasure of the board?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Bridges. Any discussion? Okay, I do have a question. And this is for Ms. Hart. So Ms. Hart, I, I see that in the, the request letter, so the applicant is, Mr. Cottle is requesting to take a piece of his track and subdivide it and only rezone that one portion. And, and so I'm wondering if, two things. One, if next month, would it be possible for you to maybe, or even before then, maybe prepare some information to the board? Because right now on the map, we don't see the entire corridor. We just see this one little section. So if we can have some understanding of the other properties and how this fits in there. And also, you know, I was just wondering, and it doesn't mean that I'm against this by any means, but does this, when you're just taking a little piece of your property and leaving everything else the same, isn't this what we call spot zoning?
I wouldn't consider it spot zoning because it is adjacent to commercial and a lot of commercial property out there. So spot zoning is when you take a little piece and there's nothing around it to compare to that zoning that you're requesting. That's spot zoning, more so than just taking a piece to rezone something and all around it is commercial.
Okay, so, so then I would just ask if it's possible, before the public hearing, if you could, or, or maybe Daryl in the Engineering Department, prepare a map that just shows a little bit more of that corridor and exactly, as you say, all the commercial that's already there and, and how this fits in. So the board and I, we could all get a clearer picture of that. And, and if there, are there any other questions? And if there are not, let us go ahead with the vote. And where's my Mayor Protem? There you are, Mayor Protem, what say you?
Yes.
Commissioner Bullock?
Yes.
Commissioner Bridges?
Yes.
Commissioner Tovey?
Yes.
Commissioner Gilreath?
No, because I, 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 when I looked at this, and then even after you just asked your question, Jackie, you're right. I don't see what we're doing here.
So this, this vote is just for the public hearing? So we're not voting to do it? We're just voting to have a public hearing next month?
So when, when will Cheryl get back with us then?
It doesn't matter, that's why you're having the public here.
But you're free to still say that you don't support having the public hearing yet?
I'm, no, exactly. I do not agree then.
Okay. Commissioner Curran?
Yes.
And Commissioner Fields?
Yes.
Okay, so that motion carries six to one. And Ms. Hart, do you want to answer Commissioner Gilreath in terms of when you can get a little more information in terms of giving us the, the context for the corridor on this property?
I will supply that upon the availability of the engineering staff to help me get something drafted, but hopefully within the next 10 days, way before the public hearing takes place.
Thank you. Will that work, Commissioner Gilreath?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, we move to item D, Consider Adopting the City of Oxford Comprehensive Parks and Recreation Master Plan. The Comprehensive Parks and Recreation Master Plan was presented at the August 11th, 2020 Commissioners Meeting for Comment. Pertinent discussion items from the meeting have been incorporated into the final plan. Recommended action is that staff recommends adopting the Comprehensive Parks and Recreation Master Plan. And as we stated earlier in the meeting, this is only the body of the plan that includes the information that was gathered from the community input sessions and surveys and discussion about going forward with the Parks and Recreation Department and logistics and how they function. But it will not include the Hicks Field Master Plan schematic. So that will remain separate because it is currently under discussion and we have more to do there. So this is just for the body of the document, which is included in your agenda packet. And with that, and, and Mayor Protem, as Chair of the Parks and Recreation Committee, is there anything else that you would like to add?
Absolutely, I'm still just as concerned as Commissioner Bridges is about the, and I'm sure some other Commissioners about the pool, as well as the Hicks Recreation Complex. I understand this is just what the community says, but I am in total, it's just my gut feeling that if we don't see it in writing, that means it's not going to happen. I'm not an attorney, but I think that's what you all are taught in law school. If it's not on paper, it didn't happen. I also would like to just make two comments. If we could, can we go ahead and paint the basketball goals at the Rucker Park and remove the chairs around the pool? Because it is the wintertime and some of the chairs are still out by the pool. Thank you.
Okay, so with that, thank you very much, Mayor Protem. And what is the, is there a motion from anybody on the board?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Tovey. Any further discussion on the motion? Okay, there be no further discussion?
I did want, I did want to make a comment.
Yes, sir, Commissioner Bridges.
You know, as I was reading through the master plan, I was happy that fitness and workouts and aquatic centers were always rated quite high. And that tells me that there is a feeling among the public that some kind of aquatic center, or I believe there was also a high rating for a indoor pool. So I was glad to see that. And, and I hope that Ms. Cheek and others understand that we, there is a strong feeling about having a swimming pool on the board. Now, the other thing that I was quite surprised about was the cost recovery chart that you had, Ms. Cheek. It seems that some of the cost recovery amounts were pretty significant.
Yes, sir.
I mean, if I understand what cost recovery is, that means that we had a program and the cost of running that program, a lot of the expenses were recovered. Or am I wrong?
No, sir, you're exactly right. And that, a lot of that depends on which, you know, which type of program it is. We ask for a higher rate of cost recovery for, say, an adult program as opposed to something that we're doing for the youth and that sort of thing. So summer camps and things like that, but, yes, sir.
Commissioner Bridges, do you happen to know what page you're referring to?
Um, well, you know, the pages aren't numbered, but there's, there's a chart, figure number seven. There's a chart that shows that adult fitness and wellness programs were rated high. The aquatic program was rated high. Indoor swimming pool was rated high. And, and I don't see a page number, but it was figure number seven in the master plan.
Okay, I will look for that later. Thank you very much. Any other comments by any other members of the board? Is that Commissioner Fields?
Yes. I know Commissioner Tovey has a motion on, 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 on the floor. And help me to understand what the motion is. The motion is for the whole Comprehensive Recreation Master Plan.
It is to approve the document that is attached in your agenda packet.
Correct.
Which includes all the survey information and the discussion. And then there is a separate document, which is the Plan for the Hicks Field Discussion that also involves the pool. That we're not talking about approving. We are only talking about approving this item because once this item, this item, when, once this item is approved, then it's possible, for example, if this board decides to move forward with plans for a pool, that it is possible to apply for funding and use the master plan and the information that was, was gathered as part of the information of the master plan as a basis for the application.
Thank you.
And, and Ms. Cheek, I probably should have tossed that to you. Do you have anything else you want to add to that?
No, that's correct. We, I did want to make sure that you understood that, that, that piece was not part of what you're approving tonight because there is still a lot of ongoing discussion for that.
Thank you very much.
And Mayor, if I might add, you, you were asking me what I was looking at. Well, chart number, well, figure number three, where it talks about revenue, total expenses, cost of recovery by program areas. I mean, there's no page number, but I, I thought that was an interesting, interesting chart because it did seem to show that a lot of the programs had high cost recovery.
Excellent, thank you very much. I'm going to look for it when we're done with the meeting. Thank you, sir.
It's about halfway through.
Yes, yes, sir, Commissioner Tovey, I didn't hear you.
It's about halfway through the, the, the book.
Okay, excellent. With that, is there any other discussion on Commissioner Tovey's motion? Okay, and now I've been flipping through, let me go back. And, okay, so we will start with Mayor Protem. What is your vote? Okay, Commissioner Bullock?
Yes.
Commissioner Bridges? Commissioner Tovey?
Yes.
Commissioner Gilreath?
Yes.
Commissioner Curran?
The vote, yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Fields?
Yes.
Okay. That motion carries unanimously, thank you very much. And with that.
Mayor, could we, Ms. Cheek, could you get someone to look at the basketball court to Rucker, please, the backboard and the chairs at the pool, please?
Yes, sir. The pool chairs, we had to throw several of them away and they, the rest of them were supposed to be stacked in the building. So I'll double-check that tomorrow. But as far as I know right now, there are no chairs around the outside of the pool. And then the basketball courts are on our project list. And as soon as we get a few warm days, then that will be taken care of. But thank you for bringing those up. But thank you for bringing those up.
Okay, when did you, when did you all discard the chair?
Well, the guys did that. They did that about a month ago where they actually went and threw the chairs away and it was my understanding they put the other chairs up at the same time. So at least a few weeks.
Okay. And my next question, when, when you say it's on your radar, when will it be done? As far as the backboards to the basketball court?
Yeah, we just need a few days of some warm weather, so it'll definitely be done before the spring. But those backboards are metal and so it's tough, we're going to have to do some sanding on, on them as well. Yes, sir.
Thank you so much.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Excellent, thank you very much. So with that, we move to the consent agenda, which is to accept the January Finance Report by Finance Director Hockung and approve the, excuse me, yes, ma'am.
The other add-on items.
Yes, I'm so sorry. I'm so sorry, thank you. So we did item four D, we have item four E, thank you very much, Ms. Bowen, which is to consider contracting with Stephen Austin for administering the Community Development Block Grant Coronavirus Grant in the amount of $900,000. Mr. Austin's experience and current role in grant administration with the city will provide continuity and faster service to the city. Requests for proposals were advertised in December and the city received one. Requests for proposals were advertised again in January and another one was received. Mr. Austin's proposal was $53,000 cheaper than the first proposal. Staff is recommending contracting with Stephen Austin for administering the CDBG's Coronavirus Grant. But I am wondering, Ms. Hart, if you can tell us what is the, his, what would be the cost of contracting with him?
Okay. He submitted a contract proposal for $25,000. And the other person who was the second proposal received, Mr. Austin's proposal, we received first. And the second proposal was from Ms. Pauline Armstrong, her proposal was for $7,8,500.
Thank you very much, okay. And with that, what is the pleasure of the board?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Bullock, is there any discussion on the motion?
Yes, just for clarification, we are accepting the lowest bid, correct? I mean, they're like, I know.
That was my recommendation, but that wasn't the whole reason, of course, we would want more of the money to go into the to provide service. So rather than grant administration, but also he's administering the other CDBG grant and so he's right here. And he could get the ground rolling. A lot of it depends on, we'll have to, after the vote is taken tonight, I'll be able to go ahead and schedule a virtual startup meeting with the state and after which we'll be ready to go.
So you're very comfortable with the contractor that will be chosen?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And you worked with him before?
I'm working with him now on the other grant.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much, Mayor Protem.
How much is the grant?
$900,000.
What are we going to do with that money? Or is that something we'll find out later?
No, sir.
To me, that's a lot of money.
Well, it's a lot of money, but when you think about a community that suffering with the effects of the coronavirus and people have lost their jobs, they're in trouble with their mortgage, they're in trouble with their rent, utility bills, it'll go quickly. Because bear in mind, this grant covers the coronavirus period, which started in March of last year.
So it's intent, $810,000 is to be reserved, although maybe slightly less than that because of the cost of the contractor, to be, to be reserved to help with mortgage and rent and utility assistance for people that meet certain criteria, is that correct, Ms. Hart?
Yes, our schedule was put together when we applied for the grant, presented a fee proposal as well, budget with it.
Okay, and then the remainder of the money will be used to help increase wifi, free internet in the downtown area with hopefully a booster that goes towards the Housing Authority that helps enable them, although I know they've made a lot of progress with getting wifi to their residents. Does that answer your question, Commissioner Bridges?
Yeah, yeah, I'm glad to hear that folks in need will benefit from that money.
Yes, sir. Okay, and with that, I apologize. Do we have a motion yet?
Yes.
Okay, was that you, Commissioner?
Commissioner Bullock made a motion.
Okay, I, I'm so sorry. So any further questions on the motion? Okay, with that, we move forward, Commissioner Bullock?
Yes.
Commissioner Bridges?
Yes.
Commissioner Tovey?
Yes.
Commissioner Gilreath?
Yes.
Commissioner Curran?
Yes.
Commissioner Fields?
Yes.
Mayor Protem?
Yes.
Excellent. Okay, that motion carries unanimously, thank you very much, Ms. Bowen, for reminding me. So that takes care of our add-on items, correct? No, I thought it was one more. No, I think the add-on item, the other add-on item was the Parks and Rec Master Plan, which was not on the agenda when we discussed it, the, when we reviewed the agenda last week, but was included in our final version of the agenda tonight. Am I correct? Correct, okay, good. So then we move forward to the consent agenda, which as I earlier stated, is to accept the January Finance Report by Finance Director Hockung, approve the 2020 Meeting Minutes for January 4th and January 12th. What is the pleasure of the board?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Okay. Any discussion? Okay. Mayor Protem, what say you?
Hi.
Commissioner Bullock?
Yes.
Commissioner Bridges?
Yes.
Commissioner Tovey?
Yes.
Commissioner Gilreath?
Yes.
Commissioner Curran?
Yes.
Commissioner Fields?
Yes.
Okay, that motion carries unanimously. With that, I will ask if there is anything that anybody would like to add to the discussion tonight, starting with Mayor Protem.
Yes. First, I would like to extend my condolences to Melissa and her family on the passing of her grandmother. Excuse me, her grandfather. I'm sure that the city sent some things, but I wanted to personally express my condolences. Also, I would ask that we, you know, so much sadness going on in the world today, especially with the coronavirus, people that are affected everywhere. And I know this not necessarily has to do anything with Oxford, but I'm sure you saw the day that Mary Wilson passed from the Supremes and Cicely Tyson passed, a pioneering actress, pioneering actress in the African-American community. And then Phillips, a young fellow by the name of Scott Phillips, who was one of my former students at Mary Potter School. His mother and I talked together and I would get him off the bus every day and he was 24 years old and he passed away this week. And I'm sure I'm forgetting someone, but it just, you never know what people are going through in the world, so life is short and we should live each day as if it were our last. And I hope and pray that everyone gets through this virus. I'm happy to see that we will be able to help people with this $800,000 odd dollars. And I hope we do that and not just sit with the money. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner. We have no doubt that everybody agrees with you with all of your comments and absolutely. Commissioner Bullock?
Just a quick question on the hole that developed on Spring Street, I know it's covered, but what are the plans of getting that completed, taken care of?
Amy, could you answer that one? I can, but I don't have any latest update. We were trying to get a second quote to assist us in dealing with that little little issue. Amy probably has that, I hope.
I spoke to the one contractor, Moffett Pipe, today and due to their other projects, it is likely that it will be next week before they can get to doing any of the work on Spring Street. I'm still working on securing the second quote, the third contractor, we need to allow him to take his steel plate back and Moffett Pipe has kindly offered to replace it. And so as I get further information, I will keep you up to date.
Did we ever disturb, what calls that?
By all appearances, from above ground, there was an abandoned eight-inch vitrified clay pipe from 1977 that either was not appropriately capped in the manhole or it was never capped in the manhole and it appears that the dirt was entering the abandoned pipe going into the manhole and being sent downstream in the sanitary sewer system. But until we get down in the hole, which is about eight feet deep and do some more exploration, we won't have a confirmation on our above-ground assessment.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Bullock, Commissioner Bridges?
Yeah, I just want to echo what Mayor Protem Harris indicated that we should continue to be mindful of, of the tremendous loss that this country has suffered as relates to the pandemic. And he, he did mention a number of African-Americans who have passed away. Even Hank Aaron, The Hammer, also passed away this year. And, and there are some that feels that it may have been related to COVID. And, you know, I, I just feel good about the future. And I'm trying to be mindful, this, this is Black History Month, even though there's not much said about it, you know, in our meetings. It is a significant time for many individuals of color. And so I just hope that everyone will get the shot and protect themselves and protect other people around them. I know there are folks who have some skepticism, but if you are skeptical, please stay away from me. Because I got grandbabies that I want to see down the road, get married. And all the folks that, you know, have decided they're going to go against science, just stay away from me. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Bridges, Commissioner Tovey?
I just got a couple of little things. Going back into the past, I don't know whether Alan or Kenny Manning is on here. I did ask about looking into the Police Department, the, the building there. And I've got the report that Kenny Manning sent. I was wondering if any of these improvements had been done, that's one. And the second question would be for, probably for Melissa, and again condolences, Melissa, is about the sick pay. We extended the sick pay benefits because of the COVID, we extended it. I believe, so I'm hoping that any employees that were sick at the time got that extra sick pay or the time back that they were entitled to. So two questions really.
So, Mr. Manager, do you want to respond to Mr. Tovey?
Yep, I'll respond to the best of my ability. I can't recall exactly what was sent. I do know that a report was provided to the board on what Mr. Manning found over there. I, I hope that I also included what actions had been taken over there to make improvements to the Police Department. We, we've not gone over and cut down any trees yet, and I think that was one of the things. Yeah, that, that was, that was a larger issue that, you know, really needs to be addressed once we get out of winter time. But a lot of other things have been addressed, heating and air conditioning, painting. I'll revisit the list tomorrow and make sure that I send it back out to you if, if everybody didn't get it. But I hope that I did that, I'll check again tomorrow.
Thank you, thank you.
And Melissa, would you like to comment to his question about the sick leave?
Sir. Yeah, anybody that has gone out on COVID sick leave is relieved, is receiving the emergency sick pay.
Thank you.
And did it need to be applied retroactively to anybody or, I, was that part of your question?
That's part of the question, yes.
No. Everybody is up to date and has received the COVID pay as required.
Thank you, thank you.
What, what exactly do we mean by receive COVID pay? Does that mean you didn't use your, your sick time or you receive additional pay?
You receive up to 80 hours of sick pay in addition to what you already have on the books for being out for COVID.
Time or actual money?
Both. You get 80 hours of sick pay, up to 80 hours. So that's paid by the city in addition to what you already have.
So it's accumulated sick time in a sense?
In a sense.
Okay.
I, I'm a little confused by that too, because I was just assuming that if you needed to be out a week or two weeks, let's say to do that 14 days, you would get those 14 days covered under COVID relief and you would not have to use your own sick leave.
That's correct.
But I wasn't thinking that anybody would get any money.
Exactly.
No, you're getting paid sick leave, so it's 80, up to 80 hours and you're receiving that in pay.
You're, you're getting paid leave?
Yes.
You're not having to charge your own time, you're getting paid while you're at home sick because, because of the additional hours.
Correct.
Okay, so, yeah, there's some work issues there. Okay, I, I think I understand that they had, that they were given additional
Time.
Two weeks of sick leave to cover COVID-related illnesses that they may have had.
Correct.
And didn't have to charge their time or vacation time or go without a paycheck.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I'm, that, that's typical, I mean, I understand that.
That was my concern, that was.
Yeah. I'm following it.
Excellent. Thank you. So, and that takes us around to you, Commissioner Gilreath, do you have anything that you would like to bring up?
No, I'm, I am good tonight, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Curran?
No, I'm good.
Okay. Commissioner Fields?
Condolences to Melissa's family. If anybody watched Fox 50 today at 1:30, my great-grandbaby was debuted on Fox 50 today. As we keep all those that have lost loved ones due to COVID, let us not forget those that have lost loved ones due to other illnesses. COVID has overshadowed everything, but we still have citizens COVID has overshadowed everything, but we still have citizens that are going through the death experience that's not related to COVID. And I got my second shot on Saturday. No, 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 no side effects or anything, but if you are not one of those who are gonna wash, wear and stand six feet, still stay away from me. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Absolutely, yes. So did you get your second shot at Granville Health System?
Granville Health System.
So I would, I would like to piggyback on that and, and say that
Thank you.
Nobody has made me as proud as Granville Health Systems has done lately with their phenomenal job and organization. They have represented Oxford and Granville County in a way that we couldn't, we couldn't hire a public relations firm to do a better job. And I would also like to point out that our own Commissioner Curran has volunteered at almost every single one of their clinics. So he has been consistently one of the people that has been, I mean, people have just been incredibly impressed by the friendliness, the efficiency, everything. And Commissioner Curran has been out there. How many times have you gone out?
I missed one time.
So it's been like eight or nine times, something like that?
Something like that.
And you always go out at six in the morning, don't you?
Well, during the week, we start about nine.
Okay.
Weekends are six.
Mr. Curran is not giving nobody no shots, is he?
No, but he's getting up at the He's getting up at the crack of dawn on those weekend clinics and getting out there. It's been amazing. So, yes, sir.
I would also like to add some complimentary comments to the Health Department, assisted by the Senior Center for what they did out at the Expo Center. That was handled very well, very organized. And, you know, they kept it sort of light as far as a little humor as opposed to everybody just lining up and getting shot. So I thought they did a great job.
That's great. So you were able to get out there?
I was out there, got my second shot Friday.
Okay, that's awesome. I'll tell you.
Now I can do more than just wave at you when you drive by.
There's a lot of consummate professionals in our community and, and we have an awful lot to be proud of. And last Saturday, Senator Woodard came out and Representative Garrison to take a look to see if maybe we shouldn't be getting a little more vaccine here because they're doing such a good job in distributing it. So I think, I think we have a tremendous amount to be proud of in, in our small community that we deliver a lot more than people expect. So it's, it's been great. And I'm so glad that so many of you have gotten vaccinated and Commissioner Fields, you're right, wear, wait and wash are still the words of the day. Because until we've had a lot of opportunity to see how the vaccine process unfolds and immunity and all of that, we can't be too careful. So I had a couple of questions that I would like to bring up. One of them is, and I sent an email about it, and I'm was so sorry that I failed to bring this up last month and, and last Monday. That I always worried, today happens to be a warmer day, but we've had some tremendously cold weather and, and we don't have, we don't have the police station lobby anymore to offer to people to get out of the rain or get out of the cold. And it worries me and I just wonder, Mr. Thornton, if we can invest any energy in thinking, what do we do for the people that need someplace to, to go when we are all receiving in shelter?
I really don't know how to have a prepared answer for that question. It's not my area of expertise. It's certainly something that we can investigate further, but I don't have a response for you tonight. I'm sorry.
No, and that's okay. But I just, I wish we could think a little bit more about it. I wish we could think a little bit more about it because we've had some mighty cold nights. And, and I don't know, I don't know how many people are out there. Might be three. Might be five, might be two, but it seems like we ought to at least be trying to think if there's some way that we, again, it used to be that we could say to people, you can go into the lobby of the police station. I don't think people took advantage of it very much. I think sometimes people probably go into the lobby of the post office because that's open. But, but anyway, it would be nice if we could give a little thought to it. And I do know that Pastor Bruce Beck has inquired. He called me after I had already sent the email out to the group saying that I forgot to mention this before we signed off last week, but, but if there could be maybe a little bit of discussion among staff, if there's anything we could be thinking about, I would appreciate it. And also you did, you did send out the plans for the roundabout design and the striping. And there are, you know, I know that a time is of the essence and people are tired tonight. So, but I'm wondering if we can maybe schedule a Public Works Committee meeting or something so that we could look a little bit more carefully at the plans for the striping, the new set of plans going down Williamsboro Street before they have to get sent off to DOT. Because there were a few things that, that I noticed that I'm confused about and Commissioner Curran. Apparently, we are, you know, Commissioner Curran mentioned parking in front of ACE, but I guess we don't have to worry about that section because there's not going to be repaving there, correct?
Not with this round of resurfacing that the DOT is getting ready to contract for. That is correct.
Right. So, so we don't have to do, but, but there are, there are some, they're just, I think we probably need to have an opportunity to at least look and make sure that we understand everything that's on there with respect to going down Williamsboro and before it gets sent off. Is that possible?
I think it's possible. I'm gonna ask the city engineer to join us here in this conversation. You know, it is getting timeliness is, is getting to be a factor and an issue in all of this. As you know, the roundabout is getting ready to commence. The project is getting ready to commence in March. I requested that Division Five give us a better sense of the time other than sometime in March so that we can alert as many citizens as possible as to the date that that will commence. It's gonna be a bit disruptive to traffic patterns and we'd like to get that information out as soon as we can. I requested that as of last week and not yet gotten a response. But I also contacted the Department of Transportation seeking some clarification about the contract for resurfacing to give us a better idea of when that is to take place because there was some information that came out through the COG and others that, you know, they had awarded a 2.9 million or whatever it was and 27 miles of resurfacing in Vance and Granville Counties to ST Wooton. And I did get a response back on that. That is not the contract that is scheduled for Oxford. So that one, they're talking about trying to get it. And I need some additional clarification, either to bid in April or receive the bids in April. I'm assuming to bid in April. Because one of the things that we have still yet to complete is a memorandum of agreement with the Department of Transportation to allow us to essentially piggyback our efforts along with the Department of Transportation. So this board will actually, you know, review and hopefully approve an agreement with the Department of Transportation to do that before the resurfacing takes place. So in the process of, you know, getting everything as clarified as we possibly can. But you do need to remember that submitting this striping plan is something that they would have to send through, you know, their humongous hierarchy of review process. And that takes some time too. So I would say that if we're going to, you know, call a Public Works Committee meeting to do this and review this, that it be done as soon as we can possibly arrange. Amy, you want to chime in on that?
I think you covered it pretty well. The, as you said, roundabout is projected to start next month. They are going to put the project for resurfacing out to bid in April. They are talking about a June start date, but an 18-month-long project so that we can have milestones to ensure that the utility lines on Main Street and Williamsboro are put in prior to the resurfacing taking place. And we are also in discussions about adding some of the previously mentioned conduit to the utility project, potentially put that in in it, in the same trench as some of the laterals that are going in that would allow the wires that cross the road to go underground. But as Mr. Thornton mentioned, those would still have to be reconnected to the building if they were utilized. So it's just a, you know, one step towards that process. The any comments that we have, you know, we can certainly attempt to get them incorporated, but we would need to do that sooner rather than later. The restriping plan that was provided by McGill for the downtown areas was, McGill was directed to follow the downtown master plan as closely as they could interpret it from the landscape architect's drawing. And so that is the plan that they did produce. So if we want to deviate from downtown master plan, we would need to know that pretty quickly.
You know, if I'm the only one that has questions, I'm happy to, you know, to bring them up directly with Alan. I've raised a couple, but if everybody else, you know, if anybody, I just, there is a lot of happening down on the end towards Sunrise Biscuits and CBS. And so it just, you know, seems like we might want to make sure that we're all on the same page. I should also say thank you first for getting this done. I apologize for not saying that. Because it's exciting to see all of this. But, you know, I was thinking it might just be nice for the board to have an opportunity to, you know, look a little bit more in-depth and ask any questions and make sure that everybody understands since things are moving kind of quickly.
Yeah, I agree. I have a few questions also.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it'd probably be better if we would see if we could schedule a Public Works Committee meeting as soon as they like, next Wednesday.
So you're saying as soon as when?
As soon as next Wednesday.
Oh, yeah. I even know any time between now and then, absolutely. Is that something, Commissioner Bullock, are you willing to work with your committee on that?
Absolutely.
Excellent. Thank you very much. So that was, and, and I know we can ask it then, but so Mr. Thornton, I don't have to worry about our roundabout being just a concrete dome in the center?
No, I'm not gonna let it, if I gotta stand out there while they're pouring concrete, I'll do so. Because that's, that's been the conversation from day one is we want something pretty in the middle.
Okay, so I didn't, I don't know how to, I only saw the very first page of the plans. I didn't realize until almost right before I came to the meeting that there were many other pages in that PDF and I just thought, oh heavens, it looked like there was an elevation and I had a small panic. So thank you. I appreciate that. And that's all that I had to bring up. Other than I appreciate each of you, my colleagues, and, and thank you for the time you put into having robust discussion in our meetings. Mr. Thornton, is there anything else that you would like to add?
No, I will add one thing very quickly. There was some conversation about, you know, level of revenue generated by Parks and Recreation. I want to encourage you to take a look at this document that you just got, which is our audit report for fiscal year 1920. And specifically take a look on pages 105 where the city brought in $92,696. And then on page 110, that our total budget for cultural recreation was $979,136. So that's actual audited numbers. And I won't say anything more. But I will say that there's a listing of dates to remember on your agenda that does not include the retreat. So make sure you add that one to your list of dates to remember.
Twenty-seven.
That's Saturday, February 27th, correct?
Yep, correct.
And I apologize for not going over these dates with everybody. So a lot of things working on in the downtown. Thank you very much, Ms. Yant, for that. Okay. Mr. Attorney, do you have anything you would like to add?
Wait a minute, I was muted.
Okay. You're good?
I normally don't have anything to say. But I really appreciate Commissioner Bridges and Commissioner Harris's comments about the, about the pandemic. This is something that we're gonna have to overcome for years and years to come. And as one of the people that survived having that, I think it's important for all of the leaders of the city to stress to everyone to be safe, to get their vaccine and to take care of each other. We have other, other problems. We have an opioid pandemic that has been going on for years. And that is something that we also need to be aware of. But I think as leaders in their community, we have a responsibility to tell others to be safe, to get the vaccine and to look forward to the future.
Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am.
Very well said. Absolutely. And with that, on those wise and thoughtful words, if there is nothing else that anyone would like to add, we can entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Gilreath. Any discussion? Okay, then I'm gonna do that. Roll call. Mayor Proton.
Yes, ma'am. Good night.
Good night. Be safe. Commissioner Bullock?
Yes.
Commissioner Bridges?
Yes.
Commissioner Tovey?
Yes.
Commissioner Gilreath?
Yes.
Commissioner Curran?
Yes.
Commissioner Fields?
Yes. Good night all.
Good night. Be safe and sound. Thank you for your time and your energy and your service to the city of Oxford.
Good night.
Good night.
Take care. Thank you.